Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming. We're going to get started at 6:30. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. James, did you take attendance?
Yep. Turn that down a little bit. President Dr. Reese is absent. Vice President McDonough?
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanser?
Present.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
Trustee Whitney, absent.
He will be late, so we'll get going without him. Any changes to the board agenda? I have none. No? All right. First presentation is Ryan Reed.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, retirees, colleagues, family, friends, and community. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting to you our incredible educators and staff members retiring in 2024. Their passion and commitment have touched countless lives and shaped the future of so many. To our retirees, I hope this time is filled with nostalgia, reflection, and excitement for adventures ahead. Thank you for your tireless dedication to Oxford Community Schools. I wish you a fulfilling and joyous retirement ahead. At this time, I'd like to invite the Board of Education and Superintendent forward. And retirees, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate and flowers. Okay. Deisha Beasley. Mike Forrester. Chris Gill. Lee Rogers. Leigh Anne Smithling. Linda Van Hollenbrock. Ann Whedon. Congratulations to all of our 2024 retirees. We wish you all the very best. And if we can get a photo before we go back to the table.
Okay. Thank you again so much for your years of service to Oxford. It is very much appreciated. And we all sincerely hope you enjoy your retirement. So moving on, Ann, for your very last presentation.
I'm ready. Good evening. First, well, I'm going to say second and last presentation. So I'm Ann Whedon. I am the Transportation Director for Oxford Schools. I'm going to introduce Mike Strong. He is our Assistant Director of Oxford Community Schools and will be replacing me on July 1 when I retire on the 30th. So first of all, we'd like to just talk to you briefly about our buses. That's a picture of, that's a current picture of our department. Not everybody, but a lot of our, a lot of our folks, a lot of our drivers, monitors. And then if you want to switch. That's Mr. Wright. He is very beloved in the Leonard community. His kids love him. His parents love him. And I think so does most of the staff at Leonard Elementary as well, too. So he's definitely a fun character in case you don't notice that. So let's start with our buses. We have 48 total buses. I gave each of you a stress bus from MTE, so that's from Midwest Transit. That's who we've purchased most of our buses from. And of those 48 total buses, we have nine mini buses. The mini buses typically are buses that we use for special needs transportation. And one of those nine mini buses is equipped with an orthopedic lift for wheelchairs. And then we have 39 full-size buses, all conventionals. So conventionals have the front end on them, whereas like the transit buses are the flat-nose buses that you see like Lake Orion has. They're a larger bus. We don't have any transit buses. They won't fit in our garage. So the guys can't work on them. Mechanics can't work on them. Of the 39 full-size conventional buses, two of those are a little bit smaller buses, and they too are equipped with orthopedic lifts for wheelchairs so that we can transport students with wheelchairs in those as well. And then all of our buses are gasoline-powered. We do not have any diesel buses in our fleet any longer. We switched over in 2018 to all gasoline. And then we also have two electric buses. And that was my first board presentation was when we were going for the electric buses. Mr. Rogers is fortunate to be able to drive one of those electric buses and has driven it since it came in the fleet. Next, we'll go to who we are. So I've already introduced myself, introduced Mike as well. And then we also have in our department an administrative assistant who's currently Heidi Pratt. Linda was our administrative assistant for several years. And then we have a transportation coordinator, which is Kelly Falk, and a driver dispatcher, Linda Sedam. All of us in the office without, except for Heidi, all have all of our credentials to be able to drive school buses as well. I came in 29.8 years ago as a sub-bus driver and then worked my way into the office. Mike has all of his credentials to be able to drive and to be able to drive with students as well, too, which helps out when the athletic department is calling for trip buses in an afternoon and we still have to get kids home. As well as the office staff, we have 35 full-time drivers, six special education bus monitors, which work with our special needs students on our, most of our mini buses, and two technicians. And currently, we have two sub-bus drivers and one sub-monitor. Here's just a collection of pictures of our group. One of them is a picture. You can see Mr. Wright again in the flashy, in the flashy suit coat that was on a birthday party. You can see we've decorated several times for the Christmas parade here in Oxford. A lot of our staff love doing the Christmas parade. They don't so much like decorating the bus, but they like being in the parade and passing out candy. At the bottom one, we actually won an award from the Chamber, I think it's the Chamber of Commerce, for most Christmas spirit. So we thought that was pretty special. We were, in the other picture, we were out front as reindeer pulling the bus. So we took our electric bus and dolled it up so that it didn't produce any noise. It actually looked like we were pulling it instead of... Okay. And then our office, we have to cover a 12 and 1/2 hour day. So Kelly opens up the office at 5 o'clock in the morning, checks for, to see if anybody's called off work, if she needs to call in any subs, or if we have students that are maybe not riding the bus. And then we close typically at 5:30 at night. But if, like if it's inclement weather or something like that and we have to be out until 6 o'clock, then the office is open until the last child is home. We won't, we won't close up until we make sure that everybody is home. We currently have 20 women bus drivers, 15 men bus drivers. And of our staff, we have 13 that are retirees from other professions. So whether it's a General Motors, maybe an engineer, excuse me, as Mr. Wright, or Mr. Rogers was. We have a retired carpenter, retired truck driver, just different professions that have decided that they retired too young and needed to come back and do something else. And we actually have a retired bus driver who retired from Oxford with over 30 years of service, who came back as a bus driver and just recently became a monitor. She's 80, believe it or not, and worked actually here at Lakeville for several years as a noon aid. She loves kids. Our average age in our department is 60. And then, as I said, our oldest is 80, which is our monitor. And our youngest person right now is 33. So we have a little bit older staff than what we're used to seeing in most of the buildings. All right. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mike Strong, Assistant Director here. Guess I'll start off with what we do. We transport 1,800 students to school every day using 27 General Ed buses and eight special needs buses. The rest of the fleet is kind of spares or athletic buses as needed. We travel 1,550 miles approximately each day one way, delivering students to school. That adds up to about 550,000 miles per year. When you add in your field trips, athletic trips, summer routes, and all of that, we use approximately 85,300 gallons of fuel each year. So it's, we just go out of fuel for this fleet. In 2022, '23, our cost to operate was $6.69 per mile travel. Our school district is 77 square miles. It extends from Drainer Road to the south, Casey Road to the north, and Hurd Road to the west, as well as Dequender, over on the edge of Macomb County, to the east. If you don't know where Casey Road is, it is 2 and 1/2 miles north of Oakland County line on Hosner Road, up towards Dryden. We transport special needs students to center programs in Lake Orion, Waterford, and Bloomfield Hills. We also transport schools of choice students and students experiencing homelessness throughout the year continually. Probably could read it off of that, but... This is our district. The outlined sections are our elementary school. Basically, that's their, the border from which school that the students attend. You have Leonard all the way to the right. The center section is Lakeville. We have DAOES, kind of in yellow, and then the Clear Lake section is the orange down to the left. Probably read it off of that better. Okay. 60% of our buses travel on unpaved road at some point during their runs. This picture was taken this last winter in January. We went out to a place where some buses couldn't make the, couldn't make their way in, and that's what we come up to, pretty much glare ice wet. We basically have eight main roads: Am 24, Baldwin Road, Rochester Road, Drainer Road, Seymour Lake Road, Lakeville, Oakwood, and North Oxford Road. That's kind of our main paved roads through our district. It makes it difficult to call a, a main roads only, you know, day off or like a snow day. You're just not hitting very many roads. If you, if that's all you hit, you're not getting many students. We begin checking the roads around 3:30 a.m. to be able to give the superintendent the best information we have to determine if it's safe to transport students to school that day. They make the call and our recommendation. We kind of work together with them, as well as superintendents and transportation directors from some of the neighboring districts, kind of see how the conditions are all over the area. School bus drivers are governed by laws, rules, regulations, policies, and recommendations, federal and state. The PA 187 of 1990, which is the Michigan Pupil Transportation Act, this act regulates the equipment, maintenance, operation, use of school buses, any stickers that are on, pretty much everything that the bus has has to meet their criteria. All of our buses are Michigan State. School bus inspected every year. They kind of do a pop-up inspection, and we've maintained about 95% pass rate for, I know of at least 15, 16 years that I've been there, and I think it was prior to that a few years as well. We try to keep up on them. Like most districts, we have driver shortages. Seems like everybody has a driver shortage nowadays. It becomes more challenging every year to get drivers. People are working longer, so they don't get, we don't get the retirees in the Big Three like we used to. We used to get a lot of those, come in for just five or six years and go, but they're working longer, so we don't get them. Some of the more rigorous testing that we have now as far as the drug, alcohol, they've legalized marijuana, semi-synthetic opioids, all that stuff is tested for now. So it kind of, you wouldn't think so, but it bleeds out a lot of people we might get. They just won't apply. Cell phone usage, which is, we absolutely cannot use on a school bus, and some people just can't live five minutes without them. So I think we probably, that probably keeps us from getting some of them, some people as well. The state changed the retirement, so you just don't have the retirement that we used to have back prior to 2008 when the changes were made. And really, with our group, there's just a handful that get eight hours a day. Most are four and a half to six hours per day, and just a few that get the new runs enough to make it an actual eight-hour day.
Just, I'm going to touch on the steps and what it takes to become just the school bus driver. So first of all, there's an application and interview process with the director. And then if necessarily, necessary, we'll move them on to HR and maybe interview with HR if we feel like we need, maybe not sure about somebody or just kind of want that additional acknowledgement that maybe this is a good person to move forward. And then after that interview, the person's required to take four different tests with the Secretary of State's office. They study for those tests on their own. They can use a CDL manual, which they can get at any Secretary of State office, and, or online, so you can also read it online. 165 pages. It's a lot of reading, a lot of stuff to cover. They have to know every part of a bus. You have to know underneath, under the hood, all of the lights operating. You have to know everything. And part of that in taking those tests, I think scares a lot of people off at first because they're like, oh, I gotta take four tests. I haven't taken a test since high school. I'm not going to do this. And that costs $70. So sometimes if you're looking for a new person coming in, they're not expecting to have to have a $70 out-of-pocket cost to them right away either. Then there's fingerprinting, which again is an additional cost, which we do reimburse. We also reimburse for the CDL, but after the fact. So it doesn't, you know, we don't just hand them $70 to go take their test. Same thing with the fingerprinting. They have to put that money out first and then get reimbursed for it afterward. After that part of it, then we bring them back in. We have to take them, or they have to go up to McLaren, have a DOT physical, and a pre-employment drug screen. So we're going to make sure right off the bat that nobody is testing positive for any, anything illegal. And now we're going to begin with HR. We're going to begin doing the Allison Vektor trainings immediately. So they're going to get those trainings done. They will get paid for those as well and reimbursed for them. And then there's the ELDT training, which is the Entry Level Drivers Training Theory Course, which is part of the federal requirements for all CDL holders. And then after that, they've gone through all those hoops. Then we're going to bring them back. We'll train them in our school buses. About three to five weeks it takes to train a new driver, and we take them out. They drive the buses. They learn all of the parts underneath the hood, how to make a student stop, how to properly stop at railroad crossings, which we are legally bound to do. And that, and they usually train in about two to three-hour time segments during the day. To continue, then after we feel that it's, that they're going to pass, so we never set anybody up to fail. We always want to make sure that anybody we're going to take for a third-party test is ready to pass. So it could take somebody maybe a little bit longer than that, five weeks. It just depends. We do pay for training, so the district pays $14 an hour while we're training individuals. And then after they pass their third-party test, we send them out with our trainers and with other drivers in the district to learn the district, to learn how to do students' pickups and student drops and everything else that's necessary, so that they're comfortable and feel like they know the job and know what they're doing now and have at least another adult, and they're not having to watch student behaviors as much while they're still learning how to drive that school bus. After that, we enroll them in 21 hours of what we call Bus School. It's a basic bus driver education course done at Oakland Schools, and that's paid as well. And then finally, they get to become an Oxford School Bus Driver like Gino and like Kelly. So Kelly, that's Kelly Falk, our office staff. She has a tendency to dress up for different occasions. She makes the department a lot of fun. She really does. So the Christmas tree, of course, that was at Christmas time. She was also in the Christmas parade. The last one she did for my retirement party, she was the sunflower, the one in the middle. And then last year, she dressed up as Darth Vader on May the 4th and stood out in the morning at the service drive to the middle school and waved to everybody, "May the Fourth be with you." She was, and we still hear about it. It's like, oh, that was great. You know, a lot of parents, a lot of kids really enjoyed that she did that for them. So we're hoping we can get some folks that would like to be Oxford School Bus Drivers. So it is a process. It's not something that happens overnight. And I think a lot of times that could be part of why our driver shortage as well, is that when you have somebody that needs a job, they need one now, you know, and not something that they're, you know, going to have to train for, for a month or so. But I would like to thank you for your time. And do you have any questions?
I just had a couple of comments. That was loud. Thank you. Well, luckily for you, Dr. Milligan, there won't be any snow days, we hope, for a few months at least. So we hope, but it is Michigan, so welcome. I just want to say God bless those bus drivers. I live out in Leonard, and those dirt roads are often impassable, and somehow, you know, the drivers manage to do it. But thank you for bringing all this to light also, because sometimes people, sometimes folks living in the city don't always understand when their roads are clear and, you know, and how treacherous it is back there on the ice when you just don't have any traction. So they do a phenomenal job, and dodging the potholes, by the way. Like on Ray Road, yeah, those are great. That's that one last curve. So your team does a fantastic job, and it's great to hear how much the kids love the bus drivers, too. You know, that's the first person they see and the last person they see. And I'm grateful, too, that we get to provide transportation, you know, with our own folks here. Because we are not required by law to transport any students. So it's great that we can provide that service with our own staff. we can provide that service with our own staff here in Oxford, thank you for all your great work.
You're welcome, thank you. We do, it's funny, during the winter, we have some folks that would not ever want to be on the backroads and we have others that that's the only place they want to be, because they don't want to be on M24 with everybody else that's, you know, or in black ice conditions or something like that, it's like they'd rather, much rather be on the backroad by themselves, you know, with no other cars, so, it just, it just depends, so, but, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Anne, and big thank you to the whole Transportation Department. Moving along, scheduled public comment, we have none. Consent agenda, you all have that in your board packet, can I get a motion? Colleen?
Sure thing. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Heather? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the superintendent's report, we have the Advisory Council for OHS and I just want to let everybody know here and at home that this may be potentially activating, so if you need to turn it off for a moment, they will be discussing Alice protocol.
Good evening, everyone. So I just want to take a moment and talk about our Superintendent Principal Student Advisory Council at Oxford High School. Based on, I think, our board's recommendation last year, Dr. Markovitz and I met last summer to set up protocols for our first-ever Student Advisory Council at Oxford High School. And we started in the fall with soliciting some of our students by email to their parents and to our students and some PA announcements, and we had applications for our first-ever Student Advisory Council. We have 21 members this year, we had five from each grade level and six from our senior class. Tonight I have with me Kate Kohansky and Kami Budzik, two of our students, and I just wanted to give an overview of what we've done this year and then we have something to present to you. So Dr. Markovitz and I met with students on Wednesday mornings monthly, and we got to start out the year by talking about our survey results and kind of asking our students what surprised them, what made them happy, what questions did they have. We also did some work around our superintendent visits, so our students were part of some questioning to our superintendent, Dr. Milligan is nodding, they put our superintendent candidates through the wringer with great questions. And then probably the most important thing that we ask our students to do early in the year was come up with a project or something that this group could be proud of and have something to show for themselves at the end of the school year. And so I am going to turn it over right now to Kate and she's going to tell us about the project, and, yeah, and then you can turn it back over to me and I'll start the video.
Hi, I'm Kate Kohansky, I'll be a senior next year at Oxford High School. Since the tragedy, we have had safety lessons that had videos and slides and members of the Superintendent Principal Student Advisory Council, we were asked what project we would like to accomplish this year. I came up with the idea of making a student-led video of Alice Drill, the Alice Drill for our school district. The council agreed that the previous lessons that were shown throughout the year weren't as specific as we wanted them to be for our own personal situation. The OHS classes of 25 and 26 created this video to spread awareness of the importance of performing Alice Drills. We understand in a matter of seconds, things can change within a classroom in a school, knowing the steps to take during a violent critical incident can save lives. As students, we wanted to bring our perspective and expand on our own training at Oxford High School by creating a video by students for students and staff. By being collaborative communicators, we strive to be role models for younger students. Based on the feedback we got from the students after filming the video, they let us know that they feel more confident and comfortable with performing Alice Drills. I would like to thank the OHS students and staff who were in the video and the students and staff that were behind the scenes, Wildcat Media for filming and editing the video, and thank you to Mrs. Beasley and Dr. Lomen for helping with the whole process.
So like Amanda said at the very beginning, we are going to now show you our safety video. At the start of the video, we have our School Resource Officer, Deputy Rofalski, who lets us know, he starts the video, you won't see that part tonight, but he introduces the safety video by telling us that the information that we're about to see will teach us how to respond to a violent critical incident using Alice, which as our students know and our staff, it's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. He explains to us that it's important to do the training so that we will be empowered to follow the proper steps in protecting ourselves and others. He also tells us at the start of the video that although it might be very uncomfortable for some of us, it is very important to do so that we're prepared, and I think that is what our students told us, that being prepared is most important in these instances. So what you're going, you're going to be the first ones that see our video, and, well, second groups, second group, we're really proud of the group and the work that has been done, and after tonight, we're going to put some finishing touches on the video. In the fall, our Student Advisory Council will meet with our staff and introduce the video to them as a first look for them, and then as we get into the fall, our first safety drill of the fall will be this video as we use to inform all of our students and staff about Alice.
When receiving an alert, it is important to remain as calm as you can and listen to your teacher for instruction. You may also get notifications several different ways, such as PA announcements, text messages, and phone calls. It is important to process the information in a swift manner. It is also important to use your senses to better evaluate the situation, what do you hear, what do you smell, what do you see?
When in a situation where you are unable to evacuate the classroom, the next step would be to lock down and control the classroom, make sure the night lock system arrow is pointing down.
To be able to control the room, use desks and chairs or anything heavy you can find to barricade the doors to prevent intruders from entering. This will provide an extra layer of safety to the classroom and advise you of time to find a safe place for you and your peers. Next, you want to step away from the door and close window blinds if you have any in the classroom.
Bring class into small groups to finish those tasks. Once you have the classroom under control, calmly and quietly move away from the doors and windows to prevent the intruder from being able to see. Stay quiet and wait for further instruction.
Notify or should provide real-time information such as description of the intruder, location of the intruder, for example, what area of the building they convene in and the direction they are heading to, and what kind of weapon they have, if they have one.
During inform, clear and concise language will be used. There will never be code words or slang.
To counter, means to distract the intruder, distracting the intruder could provide time for staff and students to think of other ways to defend themselves. Distractions could include yelling, making loud noises, throwing objects, whistling, and movement, anything that can deter the intruder.
If an intruder enters the room, students are advised to be loud and throw objects to overwhelm the intruder. Research shows that the brain cannot perform two functions at the same time.
In some scenarios, this step can come right after an alert. If it is safe to leave from your location, your act in the building, then proceed with caution. When leaving the building, do not worry about your belongings, your life is more important.
Once you're out of the building, proceed to school safety point for check-in, reunification, and contacting guardians. Report anyone who is not with you to an adult.
And so Detective Rofalski ends with saying, if you are to engage it with police officers, they'll use simple language and to follow what they're saying. And so I just want to take a moment to thank the Superintendent Principal Student Advisory Group, because you are the second group that has been able to see this, because the first group was actually the Oakland County School Safety Consortium, where our students and Ms. Beasley came out and presented to school districts across the county, superintendents, SRO, like whoever was there, we had representatives from the Oakland County Health Network, University of Michigan School Safety Initiative, Oakland Schools, along with multiple school districts. And so for, one of the biggest, I think, compliments that this group could get was the emergency manager for Oakland County asked when we were going to share the script, which was completely created by our students, and we had other districts requesting our students to come out and help their kids create videos. And so as much as they're thanking us, this has really been a student-driven process that we met, I can't even tell you how many times along the way, but it's been, we did, it was an absolute pleasure to be able to work with this group of kids, and as someone who's no longer on a campus, like it's just filled my cup in a whole different way, and so I'm very appreciative of these kids that have just let me come in and work with them as well. But our work's not over, because then I said, hey, do you guys want to make more videos? And they do. So starting in the fall, we're going to work on some personalized standard response protocol videos, as well as our go-kits, those five-gallon buckets that we have throughout all of the buildings, and they're going to be our explainers for that as well, so it's just building on something, and I just think it's been an absolute pleasure and I'm so proud of the work that all of you did. Thank you.
The voices that you heard on the video is Kate and Kami and also even Boozer, so the three of them did a great job of taking really important, really sensitive material and creating a really great video for our students, I couldn't be more proud of their work and their future work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Milligan, these are two of your leaders for the Superintendent Principal Student Advisory Council for next year, we are going to meet this summer and clarify everything so that this group can continue on, we've got some great leadership and it'll be a great group for you to work with, I promise, you just have to buy them breakfast, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Can I make a comment? That was absolutely amazing, ladies, please tell your team that that was fantastic, I know that was a lot of the feedback we received too, was things, some of our trainings just didn't feel like they were pertinent to what the students were actually doing or staff members, so it really does make a difference when you see your people, you know, in the videos in your rooms, I think it's amazing and it's very, very professional, that was very, very professional, nice and clean and great, great work, thank you, and thank you for sharing it with the district.
Thank you all so much, I know when we requested the Advisory Council last year, we really wanted to hear from the students and give them a voice to make change, and wow, you exceeded that bar by so, so much, so, thank you, you should all be proud of yourselves.
Great job, great job.
Really good job.
Yep, so we're still within the superintendent's report, and Dr. Milligan, welcome, of course, and if you'd like to say a few things?
Absolutely, I'm very excited to be here, I want to say thank you to everybody who has reached out and welcomed me and given me suggestions about great things to do in the area, so I'm super excited about that. When I presented my 30, 60, 90-day plan, the 30 days was all about engaging the community, it was all about getting to know people and the strengths of the area, so that's really what my focus is right now. So I bring that up to say, we're going to be, I'm working with our Communications Director, Kristy Smith, and we're going to be putting out opportunities for community members to make suggestions of things that they think I should experience here in the Oxford area, so please be on the lookout for that, it can be pretty much anything as long as it, you know, is safe, that would be helpful. So please participate, I think we're going to be looking at a variety of platforms to get input from the community, and I'm open to just about anything, so please be creative, think about the area as a whole and what a new person might want to experience to get the flavor of Oxford. So there's that piece, I also wanted to share some really cool things, when I did my presentation and I was asked, you know, what are the things that you appreciated about being here in Oxford during the interview process, it was the kids, oh my gosh, the kids were so amazing and the things that they are doing and engaging in, that I wanted to highlight some of those pieces. So I think we had, yep, we do, so we have some pictures of just some things that I've encountered here in the first couple of days that people have shared with me and wanted to talk about. So this is a picture of our First Annual CARES Award Ceremony, it recognizes exceptional support and advocacy shown towards students with special needs, lots of honorees, staff and students, so that was a recent event that took place. Pam Beal was supporting that work, so thank you to Pam and all of the staff. I'm a big art lover and the number of art events that have taken place, I'm just wowed by, just absolutely, just love it, and so if you scroll down to the next page, so this was the International Baccalaureate, the IB Program, 5th Grade Exhibition, this was a culminating learning experience for the Oxford 5th Grade Students at Oxford Elementary Schools 2024 Exhibition. The students reflected on who they are through a self-portrait project in art class, and these portraits were displayed during the evening of the exhibition. 10 of these portraits were selected to be displayed at Sick Pizza throughout the summer month, so I love the partnership between our schools, the local businesses, and showing off the talent of our kids, like just brilliant. And continuing on with art, below there, if you go to the next page, you'll see, and I believe Anne presented some of this during her presentation last month, but our earliest artist, you know, kids are artists when they come out of the womb, they're doing all finger painting and all of the things, and this was Oxford Early Learning Center Art Show. And so this is where the youngest talented artists showcased their incredible work and students, parents, siblings, all had a chance to look at their work, celebrate their art, and it was just an amazing thing for somebody new to Oxford again, it's just so amazing to see the joy in the students' faces and the joy in the community for this work. And of course, it's not just for our littlest artists, it's also for our older artists, this is the turnout for the High School Art Show, the OVA Art Studio 86 Art Exhibition, this was held at Evergreen Coffee and Bake Shop, and many people attended to see the students' artwork and check out photos of the amazing art, and of course, they had to have some cookies while they were there, delicious. So just phenomenal, phenomenal art program here in Oxford, and again, my love of art just really jumped out at me and the joy that students get from these art projects. The other thing that is near and dear to my heart, being in education for as long as I've had, I've attended a lot of athletic programs, football games, soccer games, baseball games, you name it, and this is what was highlighted in the district newsletter last week, these pictures are, these look like professional pictures, they're beautiful pictures, and it just highlights so many opportunities that students have to participate in sports, and having been in sports myself, it's not just about the competition, it's about learning to be a leader, learning to be a team player. all of the characteristics that we want our children to embody. So all of these pieces are highlighted in the district newsletter that goes out once a month. It just went out last Friday at 2:30. So if you didn't have a chance to check it out, go ahead and pull that up because this is just a little bit, a fraction of what is in that newsletter. And it just brought me great joy to be a part of the Oxford community and so many amazing programs and to be a part of the wonderful children and families and the lives here in Oxford. So thank you for the opportunity to present that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Milligan. We are very, very excited to have you here and look forward to the great superintendent reports coming in the future. And I can't wait to see what everybody recommends to do as events with you. I think that is going to be so fun, a great way for you to get to know the community and for our community members to get to know you. So...
And maybe it'll be like kissing pigs or things like that?
I was going to go with goat yoga, actually.
Oh, my gosh, I would love that. Does anyone know goat yoga around here?
Yep. So can't wait. Hopefully, everybody participates and provides suggestions for Dr. Milligan. All right, so moving on. Let's see, Patty is here, right? All right, move on to the OMS cafeteria proposal. And to just give a little backstory here, you know, we may not have had many questions last time. We weren't aware of the presentation until right before you came, unfortunately. So we had sent our questions after. And then again, it was found out very late last night that they were not forwarded to you. So I just want to say thank you for within 18 hours answering all of our questions and getting them in and then, of course, being here again. So I just want to tell you that I appreciate that. So did you want to go over a little synopsis? I know you had sent it to us, but would you like to verbally go over that?
Just the questions that you asked? So it was asked why Douglas was awarded Douglas Equipment. And it was, when we put those out, it's to get the lowest bid. Douglas did come with the lowest bid. And the question was, what would happen if warranty work was needed? Well, they are not local, they're West Virginia. But the warranty work is a manufacturer's warranty. So for instance, the dishwasher is Hobart. And so warranty work would be done by Hobart. And I have Hobart equipment and I have had them come in. They're local. They have local representatives. So all of the equipment, it wouldn't be Douglas servicing them. They're just selling it to me. So it would be manufacturers' warranties. And after those warranties are done, then I use McGuffin Mechanical and they service the rest of our equipment. And they've been in the district like 20 years. It was asked why a Combi oven, if it only cooks fries? But a Combi oven, it's called Combi because it does, there's five things. It can be a steamer, it can be a steamer and a regular oven at the same time. That's why it's Combi. So anything that can be cooked in a regular oven or in a steamer can be cooked in a Combi oven. It does, it takes the place of multiple pieces of equipment. There's three at the high school and it cooks almost everything that we have. So we would just be replacing the one at the middle school, which was replaced in, I became the manager there in '09 and it was already there. So it was asked why what schools have dishwashers and why I felt like there needed to be one at the middle school. All of our schools that have room for dishwashers have them. So as a food service director, you're always thinking what would be next to replace because we do have excess funds a lot of times. And as you know, equipment wears out and it always needs to be replaced. Anything that is, that I'm spending is from, it has nothing to do with general fund. It's from my own food service budget. So I would never take from general fund to pay for any of this. The middle school has never had a dishwasher. And it was, the previous food service director had a rotation in which she did all the schools. She started with the middle school and then did the rest of the schools and I'm back now to the middle school. Yes, 2007 was the last time it was renovated. I do have, like I said, in my mind, I always have what's next. The refrigerator freezer at the middle school is also old. So I haven't had to repair it, but I keep in mind that it is old. But I'm not going to replace it right now because I don't need to. So that's why it's not part of this renovation. I'm trying to think of what else was on there, the questions.
I think you covered it very well. The last important part, I thought, was that, you know, this money is only earmarked for food services. You cannot spend from this one anywhere else. So...
That's right.
It does absolutely have to be spent and there is a limit on it. So it has to be spent this year.
Yes.
And so thank you again. I appreciate all of the work that you've done and the research into this and what is going to improve food services and make the most impact. So...
Thank you.
Appreciate it again.
You're welcome.
All right, if everybody is comfortable, could we get a motion?
You're welcome.
Mary?
Move to approve the Oxford Middle School cafeteria improvements as presented.
Support. James, any discussion?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And from the meeting two weeks ago, there was also the tax collection agreement. Would someone like to do a motion on that? Colleen, thank you.
Move to approve the Oxford Brandon 2024-2026 tax collection agreement as presented.
Support. Mary? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we are on policy. And boy, has that been a mountain to climb. And we are at the top here. So at this point, you have had all of the policies. We just went through 5,000 in Policy Committee and with Dr. Markovich. All of our questions have been answered. So you'll notice that there are some policies back from the 3,000 and 4,000s in here. And that was because they were held with Trune. We still had questions. We still had changes and legal opinions. And so at this point tonight, we will now be completely through all of the policies of first reading. There is nothing left outstanding. All questions have been asked. So unless you have any tonight, can I get a motion? Heather?
Move to approve the first reading of Board Policy Series 5,000 and Board Policies 3105, 3107, 3108, 3109, 4201, 4203, 4408.01, 4507.01, and 4601 as presented.
Support. Mike? Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you. I know that you and Vicky put in an immense amount of hours into this and then brought it down to the Policy Committee and then brought it to the board. That's just, it's a huge undertaking. You know, most, most boards, you know, were not really called, you know, we don't have to do this, but it should be done and it's so important to do it. And people get on the board and there's hundreds and hundreds of policies. And so to have a fresh start here, especially with Trune having eyes on it and having a legal perspective and this is just, it's a step in the right direction. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And actually, a lot of the summer updates from Trune will have been from us and our questions. So you're welcome, Tru. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to budgets. Courtney?
Yes, thank you. So last meeting, we did the general fund. We did bring that to you quite early because we wanted to get that wrapped up prior to Vicky leaving. So this time, I'm bringing you the other funds that we have. So in your packet, you had the debt and retirement, the capital projects, which I just wanted to point out that this is going to reflect the money that we allocated that was left over in the general fund. We were deciding to put that into capital projects. So that's reflected in these balances as well as any of the outstanding Drain-A-Road property expenses for this year and next. We also have the sinking fund budget. This is the one that we don't currently have a sinking fund levied. So in fiscal '24, we spent out the sinking fund. In fiscal '25, there is no revenue coming in, so there's no expenses. When we choose to go and levy a tax, that could change. But as of right now, we're reflecting that there's nothing there. The childcare fund and then also the food service. And as Patty had explained, the revenue that's being used for her projects are coming out of this budget. So it is earmarked just for food service and she does have a spend-down plan. So in fiscal '25, you'll see there is, it looks like she's going into a large deficit, but that is planned for the renovation at Drain-A-Road and some of the middle school stuff that's going to be finished up throughout the summer and posted next year. And then the student activity fund. This is, there was a new accounting standard last year that all of our, like this is our athletic team accounts, our Lego club, you know, all those different various student activity accounts. We're now required to run them through our operating statement. So this is just showing the ins and the outs of that. So those are the budgets that you have there to review. Do you have any questions on those? Okay.
Thank you. Courtney, on the, thank you for this, by the way, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my page to go up there. It's going. The childcare budget?
Yes.
That the federal funds going to nothing, those were COVID funds, Oscar funds or something?
So those were actually childcare received through COVID dollars, but they were designated just for childcare. Ann Robb got three grants over a few years. I don't remember if it was two, over two or three years. So those were spent out last year and there is no more expected to be received. So that's why we have nothing in '24 and '25.
And those were grants that she went out and got as opposed to money they just sent us?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Did I say that correctly? That's what they are, yes. So they were COVID dollars but designated specifically for childcare.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then there was also one more thing in your packet. And this is something that you will need to vote on or authorize next time. And it's for our operating millage. So Connie Haugen, our controller, she prepares this document. And she gave me a little bit of background, but if you have specific questions, I would definitely have to refer to her. But it's something we do every year. We're required to file it with the county. So this is also in your packet for you to review and vote on next, next meeting.
Thank you very much, Courtney.
Thank you.
Okay. And unscheduled public comment, do we have any? Marissa Prince.
Good evening. I saw that transportation was on the agenda and I wanted to share a little bit about our bus driver, Ms. Leisha. And I saw that Ms. Whedon is retiring. So I think our bus driver is a reflection of Ann Whedon's leadership. So our bus driver is in a unique position because she's the first person from the district to greet my kids each morning. And she's the last one to see them every afternoon. And our bus driver essentially visits my house every day. She's made teddy bears for all of the students on her bus during COVID by hand. She's a quilter. She's made quilts for families on the bus who have had new babies. She made a beautiful handmade quilt for Hannah's family when Hannah died. She comes every year to decorate Hannah's tree with our neighborhood. And she hangs special items like wind chimes and a snowman that lights up that the kids like. Ms. Leisha is authentic and honest. She's funny. She's a very skilled bus driver and she's safe and I trust her. A boy in our neighborhood has rode the bus with her from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And he rode the bus his senior year because he just liked seeing her and he liked being on the bus and talking to her and visiting with her. She's, she's great. She helped our family on November 30th because she drove my daughter home from the middle school when I felt paralyzed, like I couldn't, I couldn't go get her. I didn't know what to do. And I called her and she said she'd bring her home and she did, right to the end of the driveway. I trusted her and she helped us. I appreciate her and I feel like Ms. Leisha's tenure with the district is a real testament to Mrs. Whedon's leadership. So I'm appreciative of them and really appreciative of our wonderful transportation department. And just to conclude, I just want to remind everyone that I fully support the families of the four victims of the shooting. They've been very clear about what they need to aid in their ongoing recovery. I ask that Dr. Milligan meet with them before any other stakeholders to understand what they need if they're willing to meet with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. All right, scheduled activities. We have some board meetings coming up. One at the end of June, two in July, two in August. Any clarification, Dr. Milligan? No? No. Okay. And final board comments? Okay, well, thank you, everybody. And again, congratulations to our retirees and welcome, Dr. Milligan. It is 7:38. This meeting is adjourned.